I want to call to order the June 3 special meeting of the Finance Committee Budget Workshop. Due to the Safe at Home ordinance, all committee members are participating virtually. For virtual meetings, committee members will be muted until asked to be heard. When there's a vote, it will be necessary to take a roll call vote. A committee member will be recognized, raise their hand and state their vote. We do have all the committee members here as well as all the the four other council members that are not on the Finance Committee. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear from the citizens on the proposed budget. For you folks out there, we will be calling the names as they were registered when you signed up. You will have three minutes to speak. If by chance you come in later and would like to speak, I will in the end ask if there's anyone else out there. But the job of the City Council tonight is to listen and see what your issues or concerns are. Ms. Meredith Martin will be calling the names and she will begin now. First name, please.
Sam Matthews.
And please give your name and address for the record. Mr. Matthews, you're up.
Thank you. I can't start my video, but okay, here we are. I'm Sam Matthews. Address 1700 Ebert Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Chairman Clark and members of the Finance Committee and the City Council, on behalf of the Shepherd Center of Greater Winston-Salem and those we're privileged to serve, I want to thank you for your valuable support this past fiscal year and the inclusion in this coming fiscal year's budget. The city's investment in the older adult population is paying significant dividends, and I want you to know that. During 2020, despite COVID, we were able to serve a record 6,365 older adults throughout the community, 85% of whom lived within the city limits of Winston-Salem. We experienced a 32% increase in requests for services during the same year. Many of of those individuals were on fixed incomes and need for access to medical services and essential minor home repairs. The services provided included a record number of requests for one-way trips to medical appointments primarily and for minor home repairs for those aged 60 and above. Additionally, the Shepherd Center of Greater Winston-Salem is one of the two state-certified senior centers in Forsyth County. As a senior center of excellence, our health and wellness programs and services provided for active older adults are highly regarded statewide. Over 50 program activities are offered each week, mostly virtual during the last 15 months and in many locations throughout our community. Program attendance currently exceeds 38,000 older adult participants each year. Last year was a record again. Last year, our volunteers devoted in excess of 20,000 hours of service to our community, saving our city government and our local community nearly $1 million in the cost of services, since many of our services are provided by volunteers themselves. These accomplishments were made really possible in part by the funding that we continue to receive through the city for which we're most welcome. The Shepherd Center has requested $20,000 in support for our services next year, and we certainly hope that you will find it in the budget to meet that increase, even though it is in the budget as a recommended level of $15,000. Again, I want to thank you for this opportunity and for your continued confidence in our programs and services and support of our mission, serving older adults throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And you were right on time. Appreciate it. Next person, please.
Robin Stone.
Robin Stone. Are you out there? There she is.
Good evening. The Salvation Army has been serving the Greater Winston-Salem community for over 114 years, and our mission is to meet human need without discrimination. We appreciate that our emergency shelter for families, the only family shelter in Forsyth County, is included in the proposed budget. Each year, over 200 families, parents and children seek temporary shelter at the Center of Hope, where we collaborate with them to create sustainable households and move into permanent housing. We appreciate your willingness to help us in serving these families in our community. In addition, I would appreciate your consideration of our request to support our senior center. Four years ago, the Salvation Army recognized that senior residents living in East Winston did not have easy access to vital community services or programming to help them stay healthy and independent in their neighborhoods. Seniors were isolated in their home, which adversely affected their physical and mental capabilities. The Salvation Army launched a senior center located on New Walkertown Road in the heart of 13 underserved neighborhoods in our community. The program was developed in collaboration with our senior members and continues to evolve under their guidance. With over 200 active members, the senior center offers a variety of programs and services, including social and recreational activities, education programs, exercise classes, healthy habits, and day trips for residents 60 years and older. We have extensive community partnerships that provide vital programming for seniors in a single convenient location. The Salvation Army is seeking funding to hire a full-time program director and support a portion of operational expenses. A full-time director can fundraise and deepen community partnerships to expand the current membership and programming opportunities. Here's a quote from a current member. Velma says, "I was recently a widow. I found myself after 40-some years of marriage by myself. I was lonely. Coming to the center, I met other seniors and we all became like a family. The center has been a joy to many and it has saved many, like myself, because loneliness can lead to depression and it saved me from that." Velma recently celebrated her 93rd birthday at the center with her new friends. In closing, the Salvation Army Senior Center is more than a program. It is a community. It is a family. Where new friendships abound, where physical and mental health is improved through exercise and education, and where seniors feel safe and happy. The center has become a vital part of the East Winston community, and without it, the members will be spending their days alone and lonely. Thank you for supporting us and making sure the seniors keep their center in their neighborhood. Robin Stone, 1255 North Trade Street.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Next person, please.
Harold Smith.
Harold Smith.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Get a little closer to your microphone. We can hear you a little bit louder.
Good evening.
That's good. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Winston-Salem Council and Mayor Allen Jones, my name is Harold Smith. I live at 3579 San Carlos Road. I am president and founder of Eurica Ministry Incorporated. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I wanted to thank you for supporting Eurica Ministry in serving the ex-offender population who call Winston home. With your vision, we provide hope for many to retain permanent housing. You make it possible for us to stop eviction notices. You help to prevent termination of utility services. You assist in putting food on the table of households with children. For that, Eurica Ministry says, "Thank you." And we really do appreciate everything that you've done for us over these past years. You have been a tremendous service to the ministry and to the city. And again, we thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Dathula Baron.
Ms. Baron.
Hello.
There you are.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Yes, my name is Dathula Baron and my organization is MYFACE, which stands for Males and Females Acting in Confidence and Empowerment. We are at 2021 Salem Bluff Drive and started implementing a mentoring program. Mentor is the name of the project, which stands for Mentoring, Empowerment, Nurturing, Opportunities, Training, and Responsibility. In late 2019, we started this project with parents referred to us from the schools in Boston Thurmond, Kimberly Park, Cook, and Paisley IB School. We're a hands-on holistic program that offers motivation, encouragement, support, and other needed tools to underemployed and unemployed families to help them to achieve an upward economic spiral, creating opportunities for improving their financial status. Many of our mentees, heads of household, only have an eighth-grade education. They're single heads of household. They're mostly from the Boston Thurmond neighborhood, as are most of our mentors. And we do have, because of the school districting, some of our families are from East Winston, including Cleveland Homes, Piedmont Park. Others are from South Side area, including Easton and Clemensville Road areas. In fact, today, I spent almost all day over in Cleveland, Cleveland Homes, meeting with residents as well as advocates who also want to support us in our program and develop partnerships. With the family support expected for each child in July, our services are essential and we expect to grow. In spite of COVID-19, in 2020, we made several accomplishments. As a relatively new project, we were just really eager to help because we couldn't enroll folks in school or or help them to sign up to get their licensing for whatever their occupations, their chosen occupations are. We had leadership classes. Because we're holistic project, we did that on Zoom. We made arrangements for people to take classes at Goodwill and Forsyth Tech. We developed partnerships with over a dozen other human service agencies, which are really very supportive. Partnered with a food delivery service to distribute meals to some of our families. We gave out book bags with school supplies. We donated larger bags, you know, and keeping in mind that these are items that people cannot purchase with their EBT cards. So we wanted to help them in whatever way we could. And we also helped the children to have Christmas, some of them who did not have Christmas in 2019. So it wasn't safe to meet with our families, but we did what we could to help in whatever way we we were able to. And this year, we're committed to getting back on track fully, which is why I spent my day over in Cleveland Homes. And we call them weekly and meet with them whenever we can. In fact, we're beginning to meet with them at their homes as we did before. So this year, we're rolling in classes and working toward helping families fulfill their goals. At the very beginning, we make sure that they do do a gold sheet. We help them with fulfilling that. And we all strive toward our motto is to achieve hope, courage, and empowerment. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Baron.
Willard Bass.
Mr. Bass, Reverend Bass.
Yes, good evening, Councilman Clark and the Finance Committee. Also to acknowledge Mayor Pro Tim Adams and Mayor Jones. I certainly want to thank you all for the opportunity to continue to be a part of Winston-Salem's working arm. I was just thinking about how long it's been since we started this work back in 2003. It's been 18 years. I really didn't imagine that we would be doing anti-racism work for 18 years, but the reality is that we have been. One of the things that we've learned, though, along the way is that there is more than one way to do this work. We originally established the form, educate, and organize to support communities and organizations in developing policies and procedures to create diverse and inclusive environments. Now more than ever, this attentiveness has moved to inclusivity. Currently, the Freedom Tree IDR is committed to an ongoing project of building a city which all community residents can flourish. And this process requires what we call a community transformation, both individually and institutionally. What we've learned over the years is that there's more than one way to get at this work. And so we have been very attentive to listening to and talking with individuals and institutions around the success of the work. And we're really committed to continue to provide places where people can not only go and do a training, but also initialize the training. And the ways that we have seen that happen over the years as in addition to focusing on these these trainings has been the establishment of a couple of organizations that have really helped out on the advocacy side of our work. One has been the establishment of Justice Collective. It's a broad-based organizing group where individuals and institutions across the community come together and do what they call social justice action. As a result of the changes that we've seen in our in our culture and nation, we felt like it was time to reach across our barriers and work together. And we've been doing that now for about three years. And the other one is Wisdom Circus of White Folk, which is actually folks who have gone through our trainings and have come together and decided they wanted to help train themselves, which we think is a good thing. So they continue to do the work. And then there's another group that has been, most recently established, Truth and Reconciliation and Reparations Group that, as a result of the resolution that you all established, we had already been working on the need that we saw to find ways to reconcile or consign in cases where reconciliation wasn't possible. And so we're working along with you all as far as trying to bring more light to this early history, if you will, of urbanization that we felt was really negative on parts of our community. We feel like those stories should be told. And also, we are looking to continue to partner with organizations that want to be more intentional about transforming themselves and individuals. And so we have a monthly gathering where we talk about anti-racist principles and values. Again, thank you all for the support, and we hope to continue to do this work. We've been at this for 400 years as a nation. It's going to take a little more time for us to get there. So thank you very much, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Bass.
William Carpenter.
Mr. Carpenter.
Good evening. My name is William Carpenter, and I am the Executive Director at CICA, the Southeastern Center for Contemporary Art. And my house is at 815 Westover Avenue here in Winston. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to talk to you. I'm here today to to sort of request funding for our marketing and awareness campaign. And I just want to give you a little bit of update on where CICA has been over the last two years. I started two years ago. I was a professor of English prior to that and was hired at CICA to help bring educational programs and community outreach. When we shut down in the pandemic, we had a fellowship show, NC Fellowship Show, and we had to end that early. We reopened in September, and at that point, we had 74 artists. Since then, 74 artists and 5,000 visitors. We've done virtual field trips, and we've also been able to create a portable gallery where we're bringing art installations to the schools. But more importantly, CICA has used its facilities and its grounds as a as a place to help other art organizations and other nonprofit organizations. On our Lakeside Stage and in our auditorium, we've we've had the NC Black Repertory Theater, the NC Symphony. River Run has used our Lakeside Stage aperture out at the movies. And we're creating an outdoor concert venue that we're giving pretty much for free to a lot of other organizations. LB the Poet will be running a Lyrics by the Lake Concert Series there. There's a Juneteenth Celebration by Steady Hyperactive. And so this is a really exciting time for CICA to be using its facilities and offering them to a lot of other organizations. The case that I want to make is that I think that CICA is a real engine within the city economy broadly and within the arts economy specifically. And we empower local artists and art professionals as well as other nonprofit agencies. And if you're not familiar, for example, with our Southern Idiom series, we focus exclusively on Winston-Salem-based artists, providing them with exposure and sales opportunities. And those artists reach every corner of Winston-Salem. And our grounds and facilities can now host up to 200 people. We've put a new patio in and a new gravel area that can that can hold parties and other kinds of events. So in supporting our awareness campaign, you're supporting the entire city's economy as well as the local artists. And I think that CICA provides a sense of contemporary energy to the city, which is good for recruiting and retaining professionals. And I want to say that the work of diversity, equity, inclusion takes time, but it also takes support. And so by helping us build awareness of our programs, you help us expand our operation in ways that will increase opportunities for black artists and artists of color. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Rob Davis.
Mr. Stevens.
Rob Davis.
Rob Davis.
I'm Rob. I'm Rob Davis, 181 East Sixth Street, 27101. And I'm the Director of the River Run International Film Festival. As you may know, River Run was one of the first major arts events to have to cancel because of the pandemic, and we were one of the first to reemerge last month when the situation had somewhat stabilized and we presented our 23rd film festival. In the intervening year, we were pleased to offer almost 100 films, either virtually or in person at Marketplace Drive-In. Our virtual shows, several of those were free. One showing at Marketplace was free in our attempt to continue to make our programs as accessible as possible to our entire community. The most recent festival was hybrid in nature, featuring safe outdoor screenings as well as over 100 films presented virtually. The outdoor shows, the core venues were the Back Lawn at CICA and Marketplace Drive-In, and we supplemented that with showings in a parking lot at Co-Patrick Townsend offices on Fourth Street, the Ramcat Parking Lot, the Winston Cup Museum Event Lot, and two free screenings at Bailey Park. Several of our virtual programs were also free, but we also know from a purchased ticket standpoint that we sold tickets to patrons in 33 states, British Columbia, Ontario, Puerto Rico, Switzerland, Spain, Israel, and the United Kingdom. So this year, the international in our name not only applied to the films and filmmakers, but also our audience. We've always been pleased to be an ambassador on behalf of the City of Winston-Salem and our pre-film sponsor recognition reel, shown before every virtual and in-person show this year, featured the city name and the city logo. We're hopeful that in future years, some of these individuals who joined us virtually will be able to come and be with us in person. Additionally, I would just like to say we have pivoted our Films with Class Education program to an online format for the last two years. And through that, we have been able to reach new schools who were never able to join us in person. So there have been some opportunities that have arisen out of the challenging times. None of what we did over the last year or in this most recent festival would have been possible without the support of the City of Winston-Salem. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I thank you for supporting our work in the past and for including us in the current budget.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Kenya Thornton.
Ms. Thornton.
Hi, yes. Hi, yes. My name is Kenya Thornton. I am Agency Director of Eliza's Helping Hands. We are located at 1225 East Sixth Street inside the Winston Mutual Building. I, of course, would like to thank Mayor Jones and the City Council for allowing us to speak this evening. So Eliza's Helping Hands, with the help of city funds, has been able to work with those individuals who have had some portions or have dealt with portions of the judicial system, whether they're coming in or out of jail or prison. We've been able to not only help them with counseling, mental health services, but also extend those services to family members. Some of those services include trauma-focused counseling. We do substance abuse counseling. A large portion of our clients do not have insurance. So we've been able to use some of those resources that the city has been able to provide for us to service those individuals. Since the COVID hit, we have seen, obviously, like an increase in the need for services. And I would say during this first, since this past fiscal year, we have serviced 257 clients, and 30% of those have been Spanish-speaking descent. So we have been able to work not only with that population of offenders transitioning out of the judicial system, but those who may have pending charges and those who may need mental health services, substance abuse, and mental health. So we hopefully are requesting the continued support of the city with our program and our services that we offer. This year, too, we also were able to help some of those families with the virtual school with some of their kids that did not have access to internet access or found it very difficult for the families, for the ones that did not, where English was not their first language. So we were able to offer those services to those families as well as providing the lunch while we were going through the transition. So we greatly appreciate the support of the city, and then we hope that we're able to continue to receive the support. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Thank you.
Lauren Desai.
Hi, my name is Lauren Desai, 311 West Fourth Street. I'm speaking on behalf of Aperture Cinema. Thank you to City Council members and city staff for all the hard work that goes into the budget process each and every year. I certainly acknowledge that in a world of unlimited funds, you would probably like to fund all of our proposals, but that is not the world in which we live. I can't honestly say that I'm not disappointed that for the third year, Aperture Cinema will not be allocated funding from the city. Like me, there are many of my colleagues who also apply each year with worthy and important programs and projects only to continue to be left out of the distribution of funding. Though I believe wholeheartedly that the program of free public access to films for underserved segments of Winston-Salem, as proposed in our application, deserves an award. I don't think me speaking further to that is the best use of my remaining two minutes. Instead, I want to use this time to kindly request that City Council and staff consider improvements to the allocation methodology going forward and to increase the level of transparency with nonprofit applicants and the greater community for the 2223 cycle. For the Arts and Innovation segment of the budget, of which 1.22 million in total is proposed to be distributed from the general fund and occupancy tax receipts, 72% of that is in grants of over $75,000 to just five organizations. The funded agencies for 2122 are all previous recipients of dollars from the city and not one of the 22 applicants who also applied last year and denied was funded this year. I do believe many of us might reconsider the lengthy and time-intensive application if the city is going to continue to reserve funding for legacy organizations, like has been the case over the past few years, while at the same time not increasing the overall amount available for community agency funding. Perhaps it could be considered to create a separate dedicated pool for previously unfunded applicants that is reserved and committed once additional revenue is determined each year. I would also request a reconsideration of the types of organizations that are funded from the occupancy tax pool in particular. As a city of arts and innovation, out-of-town guests who are contribute to the occupancy tax are not just staying in hotels for festivals to go to the Carolina Classic Fair and to visit Old Salem. They are coming to Winston-Salem to enjoy our numerous other year-round cultural institutions as well, which work together to create a vibrant arts and tourism economy for our city. When conventions come to town to the Benton, the guests they bring have better and more memorable experiences because they can also visit places like CICA, Renata House, Delta Art Center, the art galleries on Trade Street, and of course, Aperture Cinema. And these positive experiences lead conventions to return year over year and for good word of mouth to be generated for new conventions to book the bin. These are just two ideas. I'm sure there are more opportunities to gather feedback from others in this room and beyond. I thank you for this platform to speak and for all your hard work for our wonderful city.
Thank you.
Chase Law.
Ms. Law.
Good evening. I'm Chase Law. I'm the President and CEO of the Arts Council of Winston-Salem in Forsyth County. I live at 403 Springdale Avenue, Winston-Salem. Thank you so much for your time today, and thank you to the City of Winston-Salem and City Council for its longstanding support of the Arts Council. We're grateful for your consideration, for continued support, and recommendation to be included in the city's FY2122 annual budget. As you are finalizing your budget priorities, please know that your support is needed now more than ever. By sustaining our funding in the amount of $217,360 in your annual budget, you are helping the Arts Council in its efforts around relief, recovery, and reopening of the arts and cultural sector. Over the last year and a half, the arts have been greatly impacted. Arts organizations have worked hard to sustain themselves, keep audiences engaged, and be ready to reopen when the time is right. Recently, a collection of 20 arts organizations that have historically received operational support from the Arts Council reported over $7.3 million lost in both earned and contributed revenue. This is a mere sampling of our arts, culture, and creative community. is a mere sampling of our arts, culture, and creative community. These figures and losses do not include smaller Arts Council partners that receive program support, and these figures also omit our local artists, including these groups which show at least a $10 to $15 million loss in both earned and contributed revenue. The arts, cultural, and creative sector is beginning to reemerge, which is wonderful. However, it's going to take time and additional resources to help rebuild the programs we currently have in our community and help get artists back to work and support their small businesses. We're dedicated to this. We're also dedicated to a deeper investment in diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives and programs. We're going to be intentional in how we craft meaningful programming, engage with all areas of our community, and grow together with long-lasting partnerships and commitment. We are dedicated to expanding community initiatives and programs and city resources like parks and byways and neighborhoods throughout our city. We're going to work to identify opportunities and make connections to help respond to needs through the lens of the arts, particularly in marginalized communities. We are fighting for our arts, cultural, and creative sector. We will work hard to continue raising funds, and we will continue working with the city and our city leaders to help accomplish all of this. I thank you for your continued generous support and trust in the Arts Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Law.
Jason Legacy.
I am here. Let me get my video here for you. Put on a tie for everyone tonight.
We see you, sir. Go right ahead.
All right. Good evening. I am Jason Legess with the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina. My address is 901 Waterworks Road, Winston-Salem, 27101. On behalf of the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak this evening and for recommending the Youth Incentive Program for funding in the next fiscal year. And thank you for the continued support of our youth development programs in East Winston. City funding has allowed the Y to sustain out-of-school time care at low or no cost to families, even through COVID-19. The Youth Incentive Program has provided funding, or excuse me, the Youth Incentive Program has provided full-day remote learning support Monday through Friday for the entire 2020-2021 school year, serving nearly 80 students at no cost to families. The goal of this program is to empower youth to change their lifelong outcomes. Did you know that based on historical census data that a child growing up in East Winston will have two to three times less of a household income than a child growing up elsewhere in Winston-Salem, and that more than half of the youth living in East Winston live in poverty? Our mission is clear, and the Youth Incentive Program is a cornerstone of the Y's work in East Winston and at the YMCA REACH Center. At the Y, we believe that everyone should have equitable and inclusive access to support and resources to help them live, grow, and thrive. The REACH Center, REACH means resources for economic development, academics, and community health, is a reinvention of the Winston Lake Family YMCA, and how we, as a community, work collaboratively together to change our outcomes and improve the quality of life. Again, I would like to thank you all for believing in our Y, believing in our mission, and more importantly, believing in the people of this community. Thank you, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, sir.
Danita Mitchell.
Ms. Mitchell.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You're loud and clear.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. Glad to be here. My name is Danita Mitchell, and I'm from YMCA Holly House, where we serve women that are 18 and over that diagnose with substance abuse disorder. Our goal is to move our residents from crisis to self-sufficient. We do appreciate your funding for the SOAR funding over the last years that helps us serve the women in our community. 90% of our women are homeless when they get to Holly House. We work with Downtown Health Plaza, Daymark, to help get them back to mental health and physical health. Once they get to Holly House, we have onsite counseling, individual and group counseling onsite at Holly House. We are licensed to serve 50% more clients at Holly House. We did receive a grant from the city to increase capacity, so we thank you all for that as well. Our clients are working with Vocational Rehabilitation, Goodwill, Employment, the Edge Program to help with getting back into employment. We have reunited over 87 children with their mothers after graduating from Holly House. Eight of our graduates are self-sufficient, two have completed the Peer Support Specialist certification. We have had, all of our current residents are employed at this time through Goodwill and through the Edge Program. We work with the District Alternative Treatment Program for Women in incarcerated, coming out of incarceration, and we just appreciate your, the money that you have given us over the years. We continue to see high anxiety during the pandemic, but we work closely with their physicians to help medication change and whatever is needed for our clients. So our main purpose is to give them hope, knowing that they can get back into our society and become productive members of our society. So we greatly appreciate your funding that you have given us over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Dr. S.D. Patterson.
Good afternoon. My name is S.D. Patterson. I reside at 3932 Pond Dexter Avenue, 17 North Carolina, 27106. I am the Executive Director of Neighborhood Hands, located at 1713 North Liberty Street. Neighborhood Hands, we operate four different programs at our facility. The first program we operate is a food pantry. Every Wednesday, we provide fresh fruits and vegetables for the community at Liberty Street. Approximately, we are serving a probably approximately 115 different residents every Wednesday. Every Thursday, we provide groceries to Friendly Hills Apartment Complex, which is located on Motor Road, which is a predominantly Hispanic community, and we provide groceries to 55 different families. Every Thursday, we provide over 115 meals and groceries to residents of Crystal Towers, Parial Housing Authority. Every Friday, we provide over 125 meals to Sunrise Towers and approximately 65 meals to different families in Cleveland Avenue Homes. Therefore, we're probably impacting over 400 different individuals within East Winston with our food pantry. Secondly, we have offered a free learning center for the residents and students of Cleveland Avenue Homes. They come up there, and they get free learning and tutoring from our resident, I'm sorry, from our tutors, and we try to help them with the EOGs, homework, and so forth. Our third program is our Workforce Development Program. Since we have been open, we have helped approximately 35 different residents to obtain gainful employment through Tyson Foods, Decent Concept, and Dollar General, located on Renata Road. We help residents with their resumes and online applications. And finally, we offer a mentorship program that we offer, and we have approximately 12 different mentees that's in our mentorship program. So the request of $50,000 from our program will really help us in our four different programs: a food pantry, e-learning center, workforce development, and mentorship. So we humbly ask that the City Council review our proposal and give us the funding so we can continue to make a positive impact, especially with the food pantry, because the food pantry is the key to success, and we are really impacting over 400 different individuals in East Winston every week with food, in the food desert. So once again, I thank the City Council for this opportunity, and please consider Neighborhood Hands' request for $50,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Margaret Collins.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, Margaret, you're loud and clear.
Kent, I guess my video can't come on. Okay. Start. Okay, start my video. Great. Good evening. Hello, Chairman Clark, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of the City Council. I'm Margaret Collins, the founding Executive Director of the Center for Creative Economy. My address is 5212 Cedarwood Creek Drive here in Winston-Salem. Thank you for your support this past year and for including CCE in the fiscal year 22 budget. It will allow the organization to host our sixth annual Velocity Creative Accelerator. Our programs provide inception-stage business training to expand the capacity of creatives and artists to become viable entrepreneurs, and we deliver robust curriculum and customized mentoring, along with investors, to fulfill our mission to launch, grow, and accelerate creative entrepreneurs and businesses. In these early stages, the training is vital for the successful launch and growth of a company. And CCE drives economic development alongside the market traction and growth for our companies. Two businesses have already moved to Winston-Salem from Boston and New Delhi, India. 2011 is a pivotal year, as we celebrate our 10th anniversary, work to position the City of Winston-Salem as the place for creatives and artists to put down their roots, network with our community of mentors and facilitators, and build thriving enterprises. Our impact to date is huge. We have launched 50 companies, and 90% are still thriving. They have earned $9 million in revenue, $10.7 million in investment has been raised, and 187 jobs have been created. And these companies are comprised of 70% female founders and 40% minority founders. So we have a real opportunity in the post-pandemic world. In our work with these entrepreneurs, we see that some fall short of their goals, while others thrive and react quickly to the current environment. So in our experience, the best path forward for those falling behind is to retool and develop new business models and to strengthen their skills and enhance their understanding of the markets they seek to serve. We focus on customized entrepreneurial education and commercialization of new businesses, as well as existing small businesses. With disruptions from COVID everywhere, CCE programs are now under, they are now more vital than ever. The creative businesses that we support are truly under-resourced and really need the support. We serve a diverse array of creative companies, including creative health tech, photography innovation, and interactive gaming, culinary, and beauty companies, to name just a few. CCE's vision is to establish Winston-Salem as the place for creative entrepreneurs to start and grow their businesses. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Gillian Seacrest.
Ms. Seacrest.
Hi, my name is Gillian Seacrest, 27127. I was actually just calling in today. My name's Gillian Seacrest. I'm co-chair of Winston-Salem Democratic Socialists of America. We are an FC Park Coalition Partner. I'm a core member of Housing Justice Now and standing in solidarity with comrades in hate out of Winston. So on Thursday, May 27, in the Finance Committee Budget Workshop, Councilmember Adams made a remark, a remark that really resonated. "It's always been this way, but what COVID did was bring all of these issues into a bigger explosion." It's always been this way. Well, maybe that explosion could have been prevented if it has always been this way wasn't our default posture. Winston-Salem has a rich and oft-overlooked history. Smokestacks now dressed in LED do stand as auspices to gentrification, but we were once the background for the revolutionary work led by the Black Women of Local 22, a multiracial tobacco workers' union that centered solidarity, union workers and radicals who challenged the notion of "it has always been this way." When organizing with Housing Justice Now, honestly, with any organization, I swear they could all say this, there is an inside joke. If you ask the city, they're going to tell you, "Go to the county." When you go to the county, guess what? You're going to go back to the city. We completely understand that HOAS has a separate relationship and, you know, fall under the purview of the county, but we also do understand that there is money, as we see in this current budget, for housing. Yeah, some of that goes to homeless services, but why are we treating these things on a spec, basically just in a vacuum instead of on a spectrum? That's one really big issue right there. We're treating these things as vacuums. I digress. So with that relationship, we saw with the ERAP funds, hasn't been a perfect rollout. We're still missing a few of those DOT regulations. Councilmember Adams, we've been emailing you about that. So with that, that ERAP fund was a partnership, then, between both the city and the county. So we need to challenge that relationship, that those entities can't work together to remedy a core issue. And a core issue, by the way, that is driving a lot of the current violence we're seeing. That instability, what do you expect's going to happen in communities whenever we imbue people with just complete economic disparity? Also, let's compound that, which is general white supremacy, and then also the other ills of capitalism that have continued to perpetuate and just do direct harm to so many communities within Winston-Salem. So we need to challenge that relationship, and we need to really assess and look if we really want to solve problems. And one of those ways is through our community land trusts. There are trusts that essentially can guarantee housing for a long period of time at a set rate. There's no reason why this couldn't come into fruition. We basically would have to get creative with zoning, and then in partnership with that, we could basically provide secure housing without having to essentially subsidize a lot of the slum lords that aren't even going to listen to code enforcement, even though we can't even get code enforcement to actually go out to these houses 90% of the time. We could, we could basically avoid that by doing frontline investment in our communities through these land trusts. Currently, we have multiple large-dollar investors buying complete developments, flipping them, and then raising rent 50% to 100%.
If you could summarize, please.
Community land trusts, invest in community land trusts. We need it. We need that. We need housing. We need you all to work collectively so we can allay and stop the bleeding in Winston. It's only going to get worse. Help us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Duck McManus.
Ms. McManus.
I'm Duck McManus, and I live at 130 Secret Garden Lane, apartment 627104. I stand with Triad Abolition Project and Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition. In the Finance Budget Workshop on May 27, several council members, including City Manager Lee Garrity and Budget Director Patrice Tony, emphasized that this is, quote, "a budget of compromises." I have to wonder exactly what the City of Winston-Salem means by "a budget of compromises." It was also noted on May 27 by Nathan Bourne of the Citizens' Budget Advisory Council that WSPD has a significantly higher cost of dispatch for police officers than Greensboro and Raleigh at $359 on average per dispatch compared to the average in North Carolina at $282. It should be noted that Triad Abolition Project pointed this out in the November City Council Public Session, and it was never addressed. With over 215,000 dispatch calls per year, the city and WSPD should be actively working towards reducing the WSPD budget. In the budget meeting on May 27, Councilmember James Taylor stated that the $400,000 increase in ABC sales can be used for SOAR and youth build, which would be a major gain for funding towards community resources. On the same day, WSPD announced that they hired a new PR spokesperson with a salary of $65,000. This action by the WSPD demonstrates the continued prioritization of putting the city's funds into policing, while stating that funding for community resources is a budget compromise. In the same meeting, Taylor proposed expanding policing in the city by the development of a new task force between FCSO and WSPD to increase the presence of patrol officers in neighborhoods. Ideas for funding included those ABC sales, as well as the city's reserves. Why is it so difficult to get funding for community programs when funding for policing programs is so freely offered and given? In fact, the WSPD budget is set to increase by 2% to $80 million in the coming year, even with a reduction of 10 personnel members. There is little consistency here, and it is obvious that community funding seems more of a cost or a burden than the investment it is. Regarding Mr. Clark's comment on May 27 about wanting more information about surges and violent shootings, I would like to remind the council that there is plenty of available research on investing in community care resources and initiatives to address the root causes of violence and poverty. This has been said by community members and multiple times in the past year during public sessions. All of the information provided by WSPD in response to this question in the document, including the 5PM workshop, displays programs and policing that will expand the harms of incarceration and also result in mission creep in our city's budget, as none of these efforts are financially sustainable without continuously increasing the WSPD budget. We continue to set our community members up for failure by neglecting to fund needed programs which promote their physical, mental, and economic well-being. This city takes it one step further by taking money which should be used for community programs and funding programs to increase policing. This does the cities' communities very obvious harm. We aren't giving the people of the city a chance to do more than survive. We need to change the way we respond to the mental health crisis, and it shouldn't be this hard. I urge city councilors to consider what they are doing.
Thank you, Ms. McManus.
Katie Coleman.
Ms. Coleman.
Hi, my name's Katie Coleman from 27101. I'm with Winston-Salem Democratic Socialists of America, a coalition partner of FC Park, a member of Housing Justice Now, and standing in solidarity with hate out of Winston. In an interview on May 11th of this year regarding the uptick in violence in Winston-Salem, Mayor joins said the following. "I think we're looking at this gun violence from a systemic standpoint. You know, there's an enforcement side from law enforcement, but what things might be happening socially that we can begin addressing as well as in addition to just pure police enforcement activities. We're glad that the mayor can articulate the necessity of assessing systemic issues when speaking to the media, but what we'd really appreciate is seeing those words in action. Every public comment period within the past year has had community members clearly articulating the needs to address direct material conditions of Winston-Salem residents. If you want to see a reduction in violent crime, invest in the material needs of constituents." Councilmember Clark, we noted your confusion regarding the increase in violent shootings in the May 27th Financial Committee meeting. "We have belabored the point that these issues do not exist in a vacuum but are completely symbiotic. They require strategies other than the established default to increase police funding. They require strategies that work proactively to remedy the systemic violence inherent to systems of white supremacy and capitalism. They require direct investment in people. We see one of the suggestions from the Citizens Budget Advisory Council is support for small startup businesses, the so-called fabric of our city. But if the city is investing in business, we would like to see those businesses be businesses that lift everyone up in the form of worker-owned co-ops. Worker-owned co-ops could be placed in areas with high economic disparity, the same areas where we see continued trends of violence. Not only could they pose as an engine to allay cyclical poverty, but they could provide an invaluable resource and draw training for younger community members or community members who've been impacted by our carceral system. Existing programs like Youth Build could work in tandem with the city, and co-ops could create a holistic, community-based solution, addressing food insecurity, economic disparity, community safety, and presenting solutions invested in equity. This creates opportunities not at the heel of private nonprofit operators, but opportunities that are explicitly owned by the community, by the actual neighborhood. We must begin advocating for neighborhood and community autonomy over temporary, means-tested assistance contingent upon third-party facilitation. It's time to begin investing in communities, investing in families, investing in people, nonprofits. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Katie Morawski.
Hi, I'm Katie Morawski. I live at 27103, and I stand with Triad Abolition Project and the Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition. I echo statements made about the need for alternative response models to policing and mental health crises in the city, but it seems like the council members continually feign like they are interested in listening to the ideas and needs of their community and to the community-based alternatives to mental health crisis response. It's time for the city to prioritize mental health. We, as members of your community, are more than just consumers, constituents, and taxpayers. Time again, we are ignored and treated like our opinions don't matter. How does the city plan on including the voices of the community, both with neighborhoods in community listening sessions and in public sessions at council meetings, for how to use our general fund reserves and the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA, funds? The city should be transparent about ARPA budget plans as well as their plans about opening public sessions to in-person options. Members of the city council, members of FC Park, have invited, have been invited by Mr. Taylor to speak in public safety committee meetings this year, but have seen no response to follow-up emails, nor has the city responded to the 31 public comments from members of TAP demanding attention to serious public health issues. We demand the city reinvest in its community by addressing the root cause of poverty, violence, houselessness, and other living insecurities. Mayor Pro Tem Didi Adams stated on May 27th that citizens say they don't feel involved in decisions made by the city, and we agree on this. We demand that the city take this seriously, not just by acknowledging that it's true, but by doing the work of listening to the community members and letting that help them inform their decisions. Otherwise, you should be asking yourselves who you really serve. Further, the city did not advertise the public hearing for the budget on any social media platforms, which is a major oversight. This, as you can imagine, is not a way to promote transparency and trust between the city and the community. After hearing many city council members emphasize the need for community involvement, it appears inconsistent and dishonest. Almost every action and inaction by city council regarding these matters has indicated that they don't follow through with any regard of input from community members. I urge you to reconsider your role in the budget and in the lives of your community members. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Leah Tolberry.
Good evening. I'm Leigh Tolberry, and I am the Director of Outreach and Diversion for the City, for City With Dwellings. And we're located down on 520 North Spring Street, 27101, but my husband and I hail from Ardmore in 27103. So we thank you for this opportunity. And first off, I'd like to thank you for supporting outreach in the last funding cycle. The timing was perfect. City With Dwellings was able to hire a full-time staff member whose sole focus is on our neighbors experiencing homelessness that live outside in tents, in abandoned buildings, or in their cars. With your support, I believe we developed some catalytic partnerships with other agencies in town who also serve our street population. We discovered that we only make each other stronger. The Empowerment Project, Bree, Obie, and Anna, The United Way, John Mack and Leanna, and Karen from the Bethesda Center for the Homeless, along with City With Dwellings, all have outreach components, but we were all working separately. Now we work together, and that is in a large part of the support we received in the last cycle. Street outreach in a pandemic year has developed a map of all tent cities, which is updated weekly. We know who is where, we know the stories, we know the barriers to stability, and we keep excellent data on each and every neighbor we encounter in HMIS, which is our homeless management information system online. And as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, outreach is connected to 203 of our neighbors who are literally homeless on the street. This is the best data on street population I have ever known, and I think HUD affirms this by allowing our community to use our street data instead of the point-and-count data, which, of course, couldn't happen the normal way this past winter, and we should all be very proud of that. These neighbors who are experiencing street homelessness over time learn to trust us and then in turn, trust the resources we recommend. Outreach is very humbled that the city is considered, considering to continue this progress we have made together, and that's really important because we have done this together. The pandemic has been particularly hard, as many of our partner resources have and are still unable to leave their homes or their offices to serve their clients. Outreach helps transport, locate, and support our neighbors in accessing the available resources, which definitely include housing and healthcare. We believe that outreach fills holes in the system, and in the past 14 months, those holes have become gaping craters. But we love what we do. We love collaboration, and we look forward to being a contributing partner in the future of Winston-Salem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Eary. Speaking right now, try the video.
We can hear you fine. Go right ahead.
My name is Maureen Eary, and we live at 228 Cascade Avenue in Washington Park. The zip code is 27127. And I am here to speak tonight on behalf of the Winston-Salem Theater Alliance. It's a nonprofit, all-volunteer, community theater that has been entertaining this city for 38 years. This theater has never asked for or received any funds from the city. That changed over two, just over two years ago, when we decided to acquire the Bluebird Cab Company building at 650 West Sixth Street. This building in the downtown area has been vacant for four years. We have since purchased and are converting it into a permanent home for the theater. We have raised over $1.8 million towards this effort, and we expect to open the new theater on August 20th of this year. This is the third consecutive year we have asked the city for $100,000 towards that effort, and it is also the third year we have not been included in the budget. The city of arts and innovation needs to be a partner, at least at a modest level, in the most exciting, community-wide, supported, and endorsed arts and innovation theater project. Please reconsider and help us. It will be extremely important to our effort to open this largest, biggest, new entertainment facility in many years. I thank you for your time, and I respect your dilemma. There are so many deserving causes, but we, I do believe that Theater Alliance is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Elizabeth Dampier.
I am Elizabeth Dampier, Executive Director at Collidium, and we are located at 400 West Haynes Mill Road in Winston-Salem. First of all, I want to thank you, along with all the rest of us tonight, for offering us the opportunity to virtually join you and share. Boy, has it sure been a year for many of us, and I know that you feel that as well as we do. Much like you may hear from many nonprofits like Collidium, a museum focused on the arts and sciences and part of sharing arts and innovation experiences in our community, COVID hit us hard. Large disruptions that we've never experienced before, like laying off more than half of our staff to experiencing a 66% revenue loss over a year period, with one of those quarters even showing an 89% revenue loss, really challenged us to think more strategically and to think smarter and to think better. But through it all, we have used the skills that we practice, persistence, resilience, creativity, among others, the same skills that people get through their experiences when they visit Collidium. And our goal has been to continue to ask our community what their needs are and to continue to serve those where we fit. And I want to share that your support in helping us to do that has been critical. Your sustained funding has allowed us to continue weathering this storm, and I want to share with you how your funds have helped us to be able to continue to serve the community even through these challenges. Collidium Downtown closed its doors in March of 2020 and just reopened this past Saturday. We're so excited to have that happen, and it will be open every day for the summer. This fall, Collidium Downtown will be open to the public on the weekends, and without sustained support from folks like you, I am unsure whether we would even been able to open Collidium Downtown at all. Self-created Collidium at Home videos with activities and experiments. Last summer, Collidium was able to offer 11 weeks of summer camp, all safe and COVID-free, serving more than 275 children. Collidium North operated as a remote learning site from August through March for families needing assistance with virtual learning. And in addition, from August through December, we offered a preschool class in the mornings and after-school enrichment for families wanting to give their children opportunities to unplug and not be on a device. In the fall and early winter, we heard that teachers were needing support, so we converted field trip programs into virtual programs. We saw and did virtual programming with over 1,000 students in a short three-month timeframe. Summer camp this year, which starts just next week, we are at 86% capacity. So, but we cannot do this alone. Your investment helped make all of these things happen, and it would not be possible without you. By sustaining the current level of funding, we can continue to build upon the work we have done over this past year and continue to grow our work through our Museums for All program and help prevent learning loss and help families learn, explore, and rap together. Thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dampier.
Katora Jackson.
Hey, I'm Katora Jackson, Executive Director of Childcare Resource Center, formerly Work Family Resource Center, 500 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. I'd like to thank you all for your support of our organization and for your consideration of our requests for continued funding in the city's '21-'22 fiscal budget. This year has shown how important access to childcare is for both children, families, and our community. Childcare is an essential part of our community, and during the early days of the pandemic, we really saw the effects on the city's workforce and our economy, with families not having access to childcare or after-school care. Our staff was instrumental in helping families find programs with openings for both childcare and remote learning, and now that businesses are beginning to open back up, we're getting calls from many parents who were out of work or unable to go back to work due to the limited number of childcare spaces that we have because we have a shortage of qualified teachers. Even in the midst of this crisis of childcare, our staff is still able to work with many families as they search for childcare and try to help them come up with creative solutions to support them in their efforts to go back to work. Usually, our staff can find some options that they may not have thought about, and we can at least help them find at least one or two vacancies that might work for their family, their child, and their schedule, their budget, all of the things that make childcare hard for families to access. Our organization is celebrating 30 years of service to the community this year, and from the start of our agency, our staff of childcare experts have provided services to help families find childcare by introducing information about options from our database that we maintain, and the city helps us support. We also offer a variety of services to improve the entire childcare ecosystem. We provide play and learn groups for families of young children who might not be enrolled in formal childcare settings. We work with childcare centers and family childcare homes to help them enrich the quality of their program by providing coaching and mentoring. And then we also help offer training, and we provide educational development for childcare educators. Again, thank you for considering funding again this year to help us move closer to our mission of ensuring that children and families in Winston-Salem have access to quality childcare, to build the capacity of childcare professionals, and to support businesses as they manage the challenges of their employees' childcare needs. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Before we go to the next person, I do want to make one comment because it's come up a couple of times. The city has been awarded $51 million through the American Recovery Act, of which 26 million has been received. As of this moment, none of that money is in the current budget. We are still discerning what can and cannot qualify for those funds, and will address them at that time. So I just mentioned that in that that's a lot of money. We're not sure where it's going, but we're working on it, but it's currently not in the current proposed budget. Thank you. Ms. Martin, the next person, please.
Nigel Austin.
Mr. Austin.
So, good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity. First, I'd like to thank you for your investment in the North Carolina Black Repertory Company. I'm Nigel Austin, the Executive Director of the North Carolina Black Repertory Company, producers of the National Black Theater Festival. In 1979 was our first festival. 10,000 people came to the city of Winston-Salem. In 2019, we celebrated our 30th year for the festival, 40th year for the company, and more than 40,000 people, excuse me, more than 60,000 people from throughout the community, across the state, the country, and internationally, attended the festival with an economic impact of between $7 and $11 million. We thank you very much for your continued support. That support of the company, which produces the festival, has produced thousands of room nights each festival and millions of dollars since the inception of the National Black Theater Festival. As you know and are aware, we postponed the festival this year due to COVID accommodations at various venues, et cetera, and it is the first week in August, August 1st through the 6th, 2022. We're looking forward to an exciting festival at that time. Your support has enabled us to produce an outstanding festival and, as a result, has been a benefit to the city in terms of people coming in and the economic impact that it has produced. We are very excited about the festival in 2022. We have a documentary film, which will be released in time for the festival, that is being edited as we speak. We also have an anthology book of plays that is being produced and will be available at that time. And I would note that as of early February this year, prior to making the decision to postpone the festival, we already had booked 1,700 room nights, so the interest was there. We just felt it was best to postpone it this year. So we're very appreciative of your support, what it means to us to produce the festival, what it means to the community for the people that come in and the money that they spend, and the difference that it makes. Thank you all very much for the Thank you all very much for the proposed amount that has been suggested. Uh, we receive that well, I will be good stewards of it, and we'll continue to produce an outstanding festival. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
Rebecca Clark?
Hi, um, everyone. Um, I'm Rebecca Clark. I live at 1606 West Academy Street in Winston-Salem. And I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of the Piedmont Triad Film Commission. And first, I just want to start out to thank you so much for your continued support of the Piedmont Triad Film Commission's economic development and business recruitment efforts. Filmmaking is picking up across North Carolina and our office continues to work hard and stay busy to get some of that business. The film, television, uh, commercial, and new media industry was raring to go as soon as lockdown was lifted last year. And our office helped to recruit a feature film in August called Where's Rose? It brought a lot of UNCSA School of Filmmaking grads back together again, um, after they had moved on to, to LA and New York and they came back here to make this movie and hired lots of local people to work on it. And, um, and so that was a really positive start to the fiscal year. We've also recruited and assisted many commercial productions and continue to help reality series, three of them, including a new one that's on Nat Geo called, uh, World's Largest Zoo. Um, some other things that we've been busy doing, we've helped some local filmmakers, several of them. Uh, we, although our main focus is to recruit business from outside the area, we find it very important to, to help local filmmakers and local advertising agencies and other production companies keep the dollars local. We also helped, um, uh, with foreign music videos, um, uh, commercials for Food Line, Wayfair, and, uh, a commercial featuring basketball star Chris Paul and local guy too. Um, and we've also hosted Bargain Hut and, or Lakefront Bargain Hut, that is. And, uh, even with North Carolina Tourism Videos and UNCSAs, um, they, they had a dancing video and they needed some help with filming downtown. And that's when I work a lot with, uh, your wonderful Winston-Salem city staff. So, um, I'm also working on, um, with legislators, including Senator Paulo, to help improve upon the North Carolina Film Grant so that it can help bring more production dollars to the Winston-Salem region. Uh, and right now, I'm working on two things that are gonna be happening, um, in the area. One is a, a commercial that's gonna be filming in downtown Winston-Salem, uh, this month. And another is a feature film that I'm 85% certain is gonna be here. Um, and it's a $15 million project. So again, we couldn't do it without your help and our Board of Directors and I just appreciate all each of you do to make Winston-Salem a great place to bring business and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Those are all the folks that are signed up. Is there anyone else out there who has not had a chance to speak who would like to? Seeing no one, we will then conclude the meeting. I thank everybody for being very attentive to the time. That allows everybody a chance to speak. Thank all the council members. We were all here tonight to hear this and we will move the budget forward. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.